Pretty.
Sorry you guys.
Did I just, did I miss one meeting? Yeah, I missed one meeting.
Missed one there. This one that's my last time I think it was two, just kind of where it fell, but.
I can't afford these elaborate exotic vacations as you want, so.
Wow.
Please. I drive no one over to Montana.
Yeah, I'm sitting here going, what up? Can't swear at the wall, but.
Nick won't be here tonight. He got home, he's sick.
Yeah, that flu is coming back around again.
That's exactly what he's got.
There's a. One of our little. Girl Scout. Mom just let us all know that her daughter came down with a fever. Like great, because we were selling cookies and. Kelly or. Sunday, Saturday.
Well, then let's get this underway. Uh, six o'clock, I'll call a meeting in order. I will dispense with the pledge of allegiance if there is no objection. Christina, you have the role.
Yeah.
And I will ask for approval of this evening's agenda.
I'll prove tonight's.
You have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, the agenda is approved. Old business.
I would tell you, I think this is gonna be a really quick meeting. I didn't have a lot to add and I had to stretch to find new business on. Okay, so as it pertains to the P E R, I did have a conversation with Tim today. Um, they are still waiting on some feedback from some of the sections of the report that they've submitted. Um, to the feds. Um, it sounds as though Mike has some updates on the water tower repainting that he's gonna provide. And I know he's on his way.
He's walking.
Yep. Um, and Tim had just asked that when he gets that to show that with them. Um. He wants to include that in that P E R so that it can be like not just a repainting, but. Maybe a full strip and a repaint. Which has a longer lifespan. And then we can get to that one. Um, we can down to the bottom, so. It it's just a work in progress at this point. There's nothing a whole lot different from the last meeting. That they gave. And I'll get on.
The library meets in April. Um. And they are aware that we are looking for some. Feedback. We can update. Um, I will not see them until April.
Mike answered one, but.
No, um. Sure. Uh, there's just, I guess there is a little disconnect. Um. And Lori and I've been trying to. Um, bridge that gap. Uh, with Kelly's help, uh, I think that April meeting, um. Oh. I'll probably help and attend. Just to see if there is, um, some more, um. Help I can give the library board. I I think the library board is still very, um, pro-building. So there's a little bit of pushback about. Possibly utilizing that funding for improvements rather than replacements. And, um. I think we're a bit of that at this point.
Uh, fair enough.
Words in everybody's mouth, but I think that's the feedback Lori's been getting, to be fair.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And when you say pro-building, you mean building a whole new facility or building?
They wanna, they want, they want a different building, you know?
They don't wanna add on to that building.
Well, I think that's their last, but you know, I guess, I think if they had to. Um, I think they were looking at a a larger, a much larger building and that doesn't offer them the space. That they're looking for. Um. You know, look at the buildings that they had looked at already, which were, was the bank and then the moon draw builder considerably much larger than what we could add. To that building, existing building.
Mm-hmm.
So even though adding on could. Obviously enhance the use of the library, I think, um. One of the things that is, is really what they don't have is storage. But they don't have any privacy rooms either for the public. And I think that's missing in our town and I think they're right. I I I think that that is something that we don't have. Um. So. I think that's where their vision is.
But, uh, one of the things that Lori and I, um. At least for me, I got corrected on is. I was under the impression the library board was meeting monthly. And that was not the case. You know. One of their members, Marion, you know, is is off right now. Um. They, so that all of them don't get together consistently enough. So their next meeting with Lori said isn't scheduled until April. And I just don't think we'd be doing them a service to just continue to communicate via text with their group. Um. As a conversation needs to happen in person with them in order to get some decent feedback to bring back to this board.
Oh, I agree. Think that.
Fair enough.
That really helped, I think, is to to be ever-present in that meeting.
And that's what we're leaving for right now.
Yeah. The only other thing that I could say is that that doesn't. Come with some positivity or some. Options, then we may. This board may have to invite that board to a work session to have a fuller discussion, much like we had. When the capital appropriate money was first identified and we had kind of a. You know, an open house of ideas. Um. A little bit more controlled. In terms of. An agenda.
Is that?
Yeah.
Two years, three years ago now?
Yeah, really.
I think we're thinking it's, I wanna say it's been, it'll be three years in spring, right?
And we haven't spoken before. We've been chasing our tail for three years.
Well, the only positive thing is that Melissa Wheatley. Has made it very clear that that money goes back to the city and that's what it's there for. Is for us to be able to utilize for what they've. Created the program for, so it will never go away. Yeah. Um. We just need to have both boards on. In the same. Wheelhouse, I think.
And. What happens when we're not?
What do you mean?
Happens if we're not in the same.
Okay.
On the same page here.
Okay.
I mean, if people, if folks.
May I speak freely? Okay, so from my perspective. Your. Your committees and your boards that your. Your counselors represent or sit on, they're advisory boards to the council, that's where they're, that's how they're created. That's how I see them. There's really no bylaws set up for these. We have a golf committee, we have a liquor committee, but personnel committee. We are there to do. The work in the weeds to share and make final approval to this board. And, um. Just because that happens doesn't mean this board has no say. I mean, if the library board at some point said. You know. We, we absolutely want a building and the city council says. Again, you can't do this, we're gonna do. X, Y, Z instead of this. Instead. This is the board that has. That control unfortunately, if you wanna pull weight.
Unfortunately.
I think that's the, i- in my personal opinion, I think that's the stalemate that we're in, man.
Yeah.
Cause they want a building and. We've exhausted the two larger buildings that are available in town. There's really no other option, especially one that is financially feasible for us.
Mm.
But all we hear is that they wanted to build.
It's just. It, it, if you look at it in terms of. Of another committee or another board that you guys have, you know.
Yeah.
In the works, then that's how this library board should be working, but I don't see that partnership. And I would take responsibility for a lot of that because. I. Don't get minute meetings from that library board. To share with this board, um, we put a counselor involved, you know, as a liaison to be that connection, just like. Your ambulance and, um.
I was on the lending board.
But you know what I'm trying to explain? From, from that is, is yes, you may be a liaison, but you also have to be. That voice that says, okay, I need to take this back. So the people that have the authority to. Approve the levy and, you know, and everything that goes to Kichigami can actually do that, so the library has. An operating budget. And when those boards don't see eye to eye, then one outweighs the other in my mind. I mean. We have a finance committee, we work through a budget, we bring it to the full council to explain how we. Got through this budget and how and what was recommended, but. It's ultimately this board's decision to say, nope, go back to the drawing board, right? Mm-hmm. So. That's why. In many conversations with Lori, I'm, I'm starting to believe that there's some disconnect as to what that role. Of that library board. Is to this board. And, you know, like I said, I can take ownership in that, though there's been a lot of disconnect with that. Plus they have their funds in the library section where they do their fundraising, but that's. No, no funding control over the city with that, so.
And so we have a contract with, with Kitchigan, correct? Is that the?
Mm-hmm.
Essentially, the city does?
Yeah, we're, the city of Lacteck is part of the regional. Library system.
Correct.
So the other, I wanna mention this, cause it, it. It happened. This last time where. We have this money sitting in Kichigami. Well, Kichigami has to show that money. So when Belltramy County looked at that number. They're like, well, you have money.
We're talking about raising the levy.
Yes, so they were kind of like that money sitting in there, why aren't you using it? Why are you asking us for more when you're sitting on this money, even though it was, it was designated for other things, it's still sitting there.
Yeah.
And it's looked at. So that may. Have an effect on their decision on how much they're going to give. And so just a thought as we're, you know, tossing some things around is, you know, yes, it can sit there indefinitely, but it does impact. The big picture.
Of the whole regional system.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Because they don't care that it was. Designated and it was a mistake. They care that it's there.
Correct.
So just.
And on the same lines as, you know, as a city, we don't wanna have a surplus. You know, we levied for our budget, we should be using it, right? Otherwise, we should be using that surplus to lower the levy the next year, if that is indeed what's happening and that's. Kind of what Lori's saying. That's not the permission or student anything, but.
Mm-hmm.
You know. We have it active, we know we're trying to work towards it, we're trying to find a resolution. Kichigami should know that. And regardless of what we went to Kichigami asking for originally, when we had that opportunity to buy Wells Fargo. And asked if the parameters of the program. For this money. Would be an allowable, that would be an allowable expense. They already set up the parameters of what the money can be used for anyway. So in my mind, if we don't use it to buy the building or put it down payment on the building. Like we stepped forward and asked for, we still have that right to be able to use it for improvements. Cause that's how they, that's how Kichigami could be.
Right.
I get both sides to it, but we do need to finally work together.
Good, yeah.
It's just, I think that a little bit better communication between the boards would probably help.
If we, yeah, we can't sit down and stalemate. We work.
I don't even know if we are, to be honest with you.
We're trying to work with them, but. We have to figure out what exactly they really want. I know they want a building, but there's not, not a lot of options here.
Yeah.
Without spending a couple hundred dollars an hour to build a new building.
Well, and I think. Some of this is. Because that building was declined. By the board and, and I declined, I, I voted against the moon drug building.
And the moon drug building, no.
Um. And I think that they're still trying to. Work through that.
There are, there's, there's some history on a few of the board members when the post office building was. Um, built and raised. I don't know how many decades ago and, and some people hang on to some. Negativity from the past and. That's hard to let go in some.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Um. And we need a library, I mean, we, I understand that. But we need to work through this.
Yeah.
It's been a long time.
Yeah.
But there's nothing in town that's acceptable. So in my mind, it's either build on to that building or don't do anything.
Right.
Well, there's only one more commercial building for sale and it's down there.
Right.
You know. And he keeps on raising the price of the thing. You know?
Well, like I've said before, the only other option. To increase the Kichigami replacement money. Is to wait and see if the local option, sales tax. It's approved, because we did, uh, the library to one of those five regional thing, or five regional projects. But we need to get, we still have to get that approved by the voters. And so, and we need to start it and that was only two hundred thousand dollars. Two hundred fifty thousand dollars earmarked for it, so that only gives us three ten. That's still not a lot of money to put a building up.
No.
Not a brand new one.
And, and there, you know. To make it work. They really want it. In the hub, so that they can get back and forth to the school safely with the kid. That's the biggest thing. So, you know, that's.
And where is the land, where is the land there?
There's nothing.
There's nothing.
No option any time there.
Yeah, unless we knock some buildings down.
And, no. We already went through that.
I'm, I'm thankful and grateful that at least this board said, yeah, let's, let's at least have. The buildings inspected, so you have a good mind to make a decision on them all.
I'm glad, I'm glad that everybody went along with it.
Um, yeah. So. I guess that's it in a nutshell.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty much.
A big nutshell.
The big nutshell. That pretty much covers it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and. Next.
Hold up.
I am still waiting on the well disclosure, so I don't have anything new. On the conveyance to report. Sorry.
Good duck.
Um, that still sits where it was last month. Um, I haven't seen it. Or received any new, um, donations. So my next step in March is just to get, um. Jensen on the calendar. With this early spring, maybe. You know, maybe it'll be a May project, I don't know yet.
I know he wanted, uh, some other folks to do the labor on the sanding and stuff. And we had mentioned at one point that that might be a class project for the wooden trades.
That's right, um.
So if we're doing it in months, I would say we should do it before school, so.
That's fine.
It could.
Um. Let me reach out to him about that and then I'll have to get ahold of like. I'm assuming it's either Jenny Burger or Vessel or one of the. Instructors over there to see, cause I don't know. I think the trades building is spoken for, right, the house?
Mm-hmm.
Um. So that might actually be done. Earlier than you and, let me see what I can find out. Yeah. Thank you for the reminder.
Oh, they sold the house already?
Mm-hmm, wow.
Most of them are.
I, I.
Almost sold right before they even started. Are any of them to be located in the city limits or they're all going down?
Um, my understanding is this one is going out.
It's really close.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just outside.
Yeah. What do we have what or saving money?
Yeah.
Later. Pretty sure.
She's right by the storage sheds.
Oh. Follow you. Thanks.
Mm-hmm. Performance stage. I have been contacted by the Moon family. Uh, they would like to see something April, May start. Or they would like to have a. Or to have their money returned. So without. I took it to the Chamber of Famers. To see if they would be interested in helping with funding, fundraising. And then there was no. No interest. I haven't had a chance to talk with Jake about it yet, but. That, within the next month, Mike and I can talk to him too. I don't think that it's a, I think it's just a matter of, you know, everybody saying it's somebody else's. Everybody assumed someone else was gonna be doing the fundraising or putting up the rest of the money.
Yeah. And.
That's what I believe.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the plans that came in. Double what the donation was and the family is, still remains the plans to. To go forward with that the. Group would like to see.
Who, who? Created the plan?
I believe it was. I believe Northwoods Lumber did the plans based upon the information that, um, Kelvick and Jake provided to. Northwoods Lumber.
So the design, that's, I guess, more I'm wondering who is responsible for the design.
Yeah.
And that would be Dwight Kelvick and Jake.
Yeah, and then they, they gave that to probably Adam and Adam came back with. Materials and electricity and everything and it ended up getting to like a seventy-six.
Right.
Grand numbers, what I remember.
And that's where it sold out.
It sold out.
There was nothing.
And at that time is when we had the, the discussion on whose baby is this? Correct? When we went back and forth and tried to decide how much. Responsibility the city has. In this outside project, correct?
I guess you could say that. I think one of the, one of. One thing that I recall was there was a discussion on placement.
Mm-hmm.
And that was solidified, although maybe not. You know, all parties agreeing, but that was its best choice. Um. I think there was a discussion on making. You know, making the stage different to save costs. And I don't believe that ever changed. I've never. I never remember anybody else saying, okay, I'll keep working on funding.
But I think, I guess to clarify, what I'm saying is we had a conversation in here. And essentially. The city declared that we were the landowner down there. And. Pretty much nothing more be among that. Other than we had the spot for them, we wanted to stay in the spot and we kinda wanted a little bit of. Not so much saying exactly what gets put up, but. Since, you know, it's gonna be placed there and ultimately it's going to be the city's responsibility and going forward. We wanted to make sure it was something that was gonna be lasting for a while.
Yeah, that's, that's.
We never. We never took on any responsibility for fundraising, matching donations, anything like that.
No, we did not. You're correct.
That's just what I wanted to clarify, because it's.
Yeah, we took, I think we took the upkeep and everything after was built.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. But as far as, you know, it going forward.
And there was no contract. There was a.
There was a number, a memorandum of understanding and I provided it to the board.
Yeah.
A couple of times.
Yeah, I have. And. To me. I think that you, you know, with plans going forward that also include more of that. Maybe the tax dollars from. Mm-hmm. From our sales tax. Or. To, to go towards something like that, and, and I think that. We don't necessarily want it pieced together down there. I'd like to see a more cohesive. I mean, if you're gonna do a plan. Do a plan. You know, the bathrooms eventually will be needed to be updated or.
Correct.
You know, is the gazebo the only way to go down there? Is it?
I, personally, I think the intention here. Was, was excellent. I think the intentions were great. I think it's just falling short with no one to really. Champion the project and. Once the true. Dollar needed was found out. There it just dropped, it dropped there. There's no one really in charge of it. We've already. I, I don't wanna say distance ourselves from it, but we've already said that we're, we're not taking that on. We graciously are holding the money right now. In my opinion. We should either give the money back or. You know, I don't know if it's right to ask her if she wants to donate it towards something else. Within the city or something, I don't know. But I don't think. That this is going forward at this point.
I, I, and. And I. Wholeheartedly love the idea that the family wanted to put the money towards this, but. I also understand that there's kind of a timeline on this, there's a deadline on this in a way, because the family would really like to see it in honor of. And. You know, it took us. Two and a half years to get the beach done. And we worked constantly on that from nineteen until twenty-one, twenty-two. So. It's not gonna get done in a very short amount of time when somebody wants to throw another forty thousand dollars on it.
Yes, that was my question. What's the total budget and how much are they short?
I remember it being somewhere on seventy-six.
Thousand, okay, and then if we're forty thousand short?
Yeah, they donated thirty-five and wood carvers provided a thousand, so there's thirty-six earmarked for it.
You say they, the Moon family?
Correct.
Correct, cause the Pathco.
The Moon Pathco.
It's the same thing?
Yeah.
No.
I mean.
And there was gonna be extra cost there because, you know. There's. There, you know, you're gonna have to put some kind of landscaping around it, I mean. We're gonna.
There's a lot of extra cost, I mean, just to get the electrical over there.
Yeah, I think, I, I really think this is just.
Side of the park.
The building, I thought.
I, I believe that's just the building and I. I don't remember, it's been so long now, but I don't remember if that was actually it being put up or if that was just materials.
I thought that was just.
You're probably right.
And that's my thinking, and so by the time you add in. Labor and then getting electrical over to it, landscaping, all that, I mean.
And again, that's where you need that. That person, that champ, that wants to champion that cause, because. You're gonna hear tons of, well, we can do volunteer labor.
Yeah.
Only if you got somebody going around rounding up volunteers, cause.
People that show up. And know what they're doing.
Fun skill. You still, you still need, you still need a project manager.
Right.
Yeah.
Somebody that'll know what they're doing.
So.
So, I, I'd like to. If, if you and. Me and I, I guess. Whoever came, Dwight's one that came up with the plans, correct? It's just, I, I don't think he's got that much interest in it.
I. That's where I, I fall out and don't know really, again, this is where the lack of someone really. Heading it, we, we need to.
So, you know, I, I guess you, I and Jake can sit down and then if that comes down to it, then I'll make the phone call and I'll, and I'll talk to. The family myself.
So. What I'm hearing is you guys don't wanna take any action on. Giving the money back until after that happens.
You'll know by this meeting, but our next.
By the eleven, by March eleventh?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we should do that. Right away.
Okay, you do that right away.
Yeah.
And we'll get this. Cause like I said, I told, I told the family I would take it to the chamber, I would take it to. The council. And I realize we don't. And I realized we don't have. The extra funds to put into it.
Right.
So I, it's. But I'm doing my due diligence.
Well, if you need to grab my project folder. I have it, there's not a lot in it except the one copy of the plans I could provide to you guys during that meeting that Kelvick brought them and then um. The donation.
I'll get ahold of Jake. And. You and we'll, we'll just meet down at the.
Yep, that's fine, you let me know, I'll make. Anything work that works.
Well, I mean, unless you're moving three feet of snow tomorrow, so.
Let's hope not. Let's hope not.
So yeah, I'll get ahold within the next couple days.
Sounds good to me next.
Thank you all for. Hearing me on it. Funding options for City Hall.
So Gail Leiberson from Woodset um found another option. Um, I believe I reported last time that USDA was not the best option for us. But she did find one that runs through Bell Trammy Electric, they actually get um buttoned. This is funding, okay, so this is kind of a, a circle, which is really interesting, so. Um, big entities like their co-ops can get money from USDA and loan them out too. But it's a different USDA program. And um that's the one that Gail right now is looking into, it sounds like um. It would be a combo grant loan, but I don't know what the percentage is yet, so I don't have details to give you guys. But she's looking into the ones partner with Bell Trammy Electric. Um.
Absolutely, I don't know that.
Well, and I could give you some more information once I get it, but I, what I can tell you is it's an economic development. Type entity from USDA, they have the funds. Available when we were um going through USDA for the public facility too and they were interested in. You know, putting their, that, you know, pledging their funds as a loan. Through their program for our facility as well, since you know, there, we're one of the big customers. Um, it just didn't work for what we were trying to um. Finish off when we needed to borrow some more money from the um building when it ended up being more than the thought. Originally bidding out for, so um anyway. Side thing, it is a you, it is a small cities um program through USDA that businesses. Can run, run through, but they have to be cooperatives and they have to be utility companies. So. I'll be able to provide you more details hopefully next month. Still hoping for it. I. Think Mike and I have a good understanding as to why we have water in the basement though. Can you help me share this information?
Oh, I can try.
Okay, so a few Fridays ago after we, remember when it rained really hard? Like that Thursday, a few weeks ago, it was in between a couple, right after our work session. I went downstairs when I gave them the next morning, cuz I knew there'd probably be water in the basement.
You can't let you save on an indoor pool.
And uh, I wanted to, I wanna make sure it wasn't really, really bad.
We get done talking to you, you're not gonna wanna swim in that pool.
Yeah, um, well. I had to call Julson's because the um floor drain in the utility room backed up. The sewer part done.
Well, I would assume that's what would back up.
Right. So I called Julson's, they came, they snaked out our system. Mike was not supposed to work that day, but he came in anyway and helped. Chris and Max tried to figure out um. The sewer line for this building.
Oh, I bet you that's a plan for them.
And it turns out it is. An issue with um ticking the buildings down because. We are not this building's sewer main. Sewer service line isn't directly connected to the sewer main. Itself by itself, on its own, did I say that right?
Pretty close.
Okay, it's actually tied into the service main for the building that was just north of us that came down. So when there's groundwater. It goes into and apparently I, I mean, I'm not kind of in any fingers, I'll take ownership myself. The uh sewer line for that building didn't get capped off. We had no idea that this service line was connected to that service line. So some of the water that's coming in is coming in backwards. From that building's sewer service line. Does that sound about right?
You're, you're, you're real close. You're right in there. So that day. That. This was the second time now. Roughly right around this time here, last year was the first time. That there was a backup and couldn't figure it out what was going on, what was going on. So brought the rotor router in to try to clean it out cuz they couldn't push through it, try to figure out what the deal is. Couldn't get in, so what we did is we opened a couple of manholes out here. To look and see, we ran in backwards with the camera, looking to see what the material was, looking to see where. The service line came in. Because when we went in downstairs, we were able to go out a certain footage. And knowing that footage that we went out, we should have been out in the main here, or we should have been out in the main here. But we weren't, and we couldn't figure out what was going on. So between myself, Max Burmeister, Chris Collison. Chris Brown, you know, there's a lot of years of.
History.
Kind of history experience, knowing what you're doing. The collective was down there, it's okay, it must go this way. Which is north, jog like this, jog back like that, cuz we, we ran a camera in it as far as we could. And we're able to see where the turns and everything. Well. At that time, our collective thought was. It's gotta go north. We don't understand what's going on, we can tell that there's water coming in at one point. And there shouldn't be because we're not in Maine. We're coming in our line into another line somewhere and there's water coming. But this isn't a, a sewer main. So I'm thinking, oh, we're definitely connected to somewhere else. Thought was up there. Well, then I got. Some knowledge from another member of the community that said, yep. This building and two businesses that were in that building, all three of them were ran together. So what we're thinking happened is when that building came out. You know, everything got backfilled and everything. Whether it didn't get capped or it did get capped and possibly during the refill process. It broke or something. What we believe has happened is that. Some of that material has been able to work its way in. It's gotten in and then you're getting. You know, the toilet paper and stuff coming from this building. You're getting all the water coming from a site that before had. A, a whole roof over it, roof drains going out back, no water is there. You have disturbed the material that obviously lets your water percolate through the soil faster. So you've got kind of this whole thing going on. When you had the amount of rain that we did in a couple days and the frost came out, there was nowhere for anything to go. It couldn't get out fast enough. So to fix it properly. We need to dig up over there in the open lot. Find that. Find where ours comes into it. Essentially cut that off. Recap over there. And then we need to dig up the sidewalk and the street out here and actually connect it properly.
What, what frustrates me about this discovery is that it was. Probably in the nineties when the four block radius got new service lines. Because when we did the sixteen to eighteen infrastructure on Summit and Main. It didn't start on Main Street until you got north of, until you got north of Northern. So the two blocks from. Um Summit to Northern had all new service lines in it back in the nineties.
And see the problem, the problem there.
City didn't have its own service line, it got tied to a non. You know, a non-governmental building instead, it just, it seems like it was done. Incorrectly. In my mind, cuz I know talking to Ken Gustafson, he had his own assessment for his building. But I don't know what happened going this way. And to me, that's not right, but for what it's worth, it's history, we just need to figure out how things did.
My, my insight on that is that. It was an oversight is what it was, what happened, I'm guessing. Whether they started because they did this block and I believe they also did Summit at the same time.
Yep.
So I think what happened is that for one, when, when you rip up a street and you replace service lines. You just go right down the line, as soon as you hit one, you replace it. You know, you're not thinking about, as those guys are going down, they're not thinking, well, there should be a line in here for here. They're kind of thinking that. But especially on this corner building, if they started over here, they might have thought, well, we don't run into it, it must be on that side. So they went down this way, got everything done, started digging here and realize it's not here either. You know, so it very well could have just been an oversight on that. It never ever should have been hooked up in the first place, all three of them together.
No.
That's plain and simple, why that was ever done.
That probably dates from the structure that was here prior to this one.
I doubt that, they would have had to rehooked at some point, there's.
Cause the sidewalk is fairly new.
Well, yeah, it's clay tile in there, but then we run into a cast section. So the cast is obviously newer than the clay tile, so somebody was in there at some point doing something. And you know, I mean, if it was real old, it still doesn't make sense to go out that way.
Yeah, but it's the twenties and thirties, it's not a hobble. This, when the old bank was here, this was a big a lot part of it, cuz they used to have the duck behind it.
Sure. I'm thinking back to the nineties when. Early, well. Mid to late nineties. And I can remember the streets being. Ripped, oh, yeah, I was gravel for. That entire winter, so that was like.
That would have been shortly after the seventy one switch over.
Yeah.
Then I would assume. Probably as soon as they got everybody out to the new one, then they started the, the repairs in here. Wasn't that around eighty eighth or so? Mid or seventy seven.
Oh, was it really? Okay, well, I was wrong there.
I mean, it was. I, when I left home, it was still.
But the fact that, yeah, I remember the nineties when they ripped up the two. Main and Summit, and they did them, and they don't. You know, that was brutal.
Either, either way, it's. All right.
Get fixed probably. Long story short. What's the damage?
I don't know yet.
Honestly, the, it, it's nice because. You know, I, I know that the owner of the lot isn't gonna have a problem with us.
No.
Digging over there as long as, you know, we replace it back to how it is, which. Pretty easy.
Well, and that's a huge thing that uh is an issue for us, you know, we have that problem in this town to begin with. That, you know, I mean, with how dry this winter was, those few days there where the frost came out and it rained. We saw our sewer system just go to max capacity instantly because of. How much inflow and infiltration we have. So something like that, that's a ton of water coming in over there. That's easy, that's the easiest part is digging that up and capping that. The harder part is digging here, going through the curve and into the street and hooking to the sewer.
My pro- I'm pretty sure my project has doubled.
Yeah. So. You know, I was kind of watching when, when he was doing that. Over there, did he go and dig the floors out?
Yeah, that's all done.
I mean, so, so, cuz there were floor drains in there, so, so that's what, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, that's when I got broken up.
So.
But it's still there.
Well, that's where, that's where I'm kind of going with this, so the floor drains are there with, so there's water going down and floor drains going in sewer by it?
I, I, I thought that was taken out.
That got taken out, the only problem that I. Have narrowed down is that it's, it's this line, I don't think that got capped. And I, that's an oversight on my part.
Our, our line ties into their line.
Yeah.
And then.
Supposed to be there.
Right, it's, it's not the trails in the middle. Building, it's the one next to us that I believe.
If, if it's the one where the bowling alley was, that basement's still there.
Yeah, no, no, it's the one closest to us that I understand.
That's, that's my understanding is that we go this way.
Yeah.
That farthest one came this way, they all met in the middle and then went out. That's what we think anyways, we, we run into a point where. It's again, clay tile, everything is dropped and settled, we can't get the crammer any farther, so we can't even get out to the main.
So it's a bad thing that it happened, but it gave us a better answer and a better water intrusion. You know, so, not solution, but understand.
Kind of figured out.
I know. I know.
It's gonna cost you, you know, a few times, but.
You know, it's, it's not gonna be nearly as bad as.
What's our solution for the meantime to keep it growing?
Nothing. There, there's no meantime, it's a dig it up, that's all there is. What we can.
Okay, when are you gonna dig it up? Well, you need to wait until spring.
Yeah.
Basically. Dig over there, find cap behind where we are.
Right.
Or. You dig this first, get us hooked up first, then dig, find where everything is, take. Everything off behind it other than the stub coming from the main and cap there. Follow what I'm saying so that there's no, no tea in there, no nothing.
Right.
We're gonna bring in a port body for Christina and Paige or?
No, actually it would, that would be pretty, pretty quick and easy, really.
When they were doing service lines on Summit and Main, there was not, there was. There was not a lot of interruption to the residents that I recall.
Should just roll right through it, right?
Well, the, the main thing is, you know, essentially your, your road cut, you're digging all that, once you get everything down and ready. You know, then it's okay, you might be out for a couple hours while they lay these couple new sticks of pipe, but it should be pretty short interruption in here.
It'll be the road.
And I rate. Now go. Yep.
How, how far out into the street is the sewer?
Oh, it's dead center, I'd have to go out. Yeah, it's.
This side or?
What's that?
Is the water line on this side or the?
Uh, the water, I believe is on the west side.
Yeah, so we don't have to worry.
So you don't have to cross water, which makes it way nicer.
You were as closest.
No, no.
I wouldn't jump right to wave.
And our, and our little this way. You got some, you got some power because of the street light and stuff there, but. The street light is actually. Just this side of where we need to be, if it were back another. We wouldn't even have that.
I mean hindsight, if we didn't have, you know, security insurance outside the tenants right now and. The DMV with the increased people using our restroom, I don't know. Even with that big rain, I don't know if we would have. Seen what we saw that day.
No.
You know. But again, we don't know how bad it's plugged up.
Well, it's not something we can just, you know, it's gotta.
Yeah, but it has to be dug, it has to be fixed, there's no.
There's no getting around.
There's no simple fix, there's no band-aid, it's just, it is what it is.
What's our responsibility for getting that done for the buyers of that property? I mean, quickly getting it done, I mean, if they're, they wanna build.
You know, on a, on a technical, on a technicality, we, we don't have any responsibility. However.
It was, it was part of the original demolition plans for the lines to be capped and if the one got. Was failed or got missed, then it is still our responsibility, that's, that's my opinion.
We owe it to the lot to do it properly.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, we don't. Technically, we have no responsibility to it, we don't own it.
Yeah.
It was found after, it wasn't malicious or anything, it just is what it is.
And I guess I mean by responsibility, if they start building and we haven't done anything and we need to do something.
I wouldn't start.
They, well, if you were.
Them, are we gonna be holding them up if we don't do, take immediate?
I haven't seen any plans come from them yet.
Okay.
So I think we're safe in the neck, in the very short term.
And beyond that, the very first thing you have to do over there before you start building is hook onto the water and sewer.
Okay.
So they would find it.
They would have to find that sort of responsibility, now that would kind of. Take care of cutting off the rest.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you that we should work on hooking this building up first.
Yeah, I, I think that makes more sense is get our line, our new line set and done. And then go out for that and get rid of that. And then go out for that and get rid of that.
One of my plans was, um, since that happened and I just haven't had a chance to do it, we can get with Tim. And Caleb and let them know what Mike and the guys discovered that day. So that I can hopefully get them to. Make a good plan for it so that we have some.
You're not gonna be able to plan for it. I can tell you that. Ju- just from.
The floor downstairs.
Just from what we came up with on how this whole thing is ran. There, there's no good plan for this. It's gonna be. It's gonna be pull it out and. Replace it as you go and try to, you know, make it proper because. Whatever was done doesn't make sense to any of us that have been doing this stuff for a while.
I I get lost when we go to first names, but who are Tim and Caleb?
Oh, from Woodson. The guys from Woodson.
So, but don't. I mean, we're not talking, you know, a fifty thousand dollar. Fix here. This isn't gonna be anywhere near that. If it is, I apologize now. There's no way it should be. You do, but. You know, you do it right and you dig the trench narrow. It's not that wide of a spot.
We're gonna do it right.
Well, we're gonna give it our best. How about that? Cause you're already trying to fix a. We're gonna do it as right as we can. How about that?
How about those funding options, huh?
Yep. Like, you know what I get?
Moving on.
I thought you'd like to hear that story. Sorry.
No, that's stuff we should definitely know.
I figured as much, yeah. Not exactly what I wanted to walk into that day and not the story I wanted to come out to, but yeah. Anyway, moving on.
I have a meeting to show.
How's the water tower?
Korea, a local option sales tax?
Uh, yes, I have a meeting with Pinnacle and with Seth on Wednesday. On Wednesday afternoon to discuss marketing plans. Um, so I'll have more to report after that. I just got my. Calendar from the Secretary of State's website for this year's elections and I have a deadline of. August fifteenth that I need to have, um, the template for our ballot for the general election for. The voters to be done, so I will be working on that as well. Um, somewhere in between that plan, we'll we'll get the. Um, how we're going to present it to the voters. And then we just need to see where it goes in in November.
That would be, you said August fif- fifteen?
August fifteenth is the date I have to have the template to the county, so it makes it on the ballot. And I'll have to work with them on language.
Yeah.
Try to make it as understandable as possible. Yeah.
It's better. I feel like to decide if I'm running.
Um, that's actually your last date to back out, I think, because. The reason I say that is because that's when the county needs to, um. Get all of the information to put on the general election ballots so that early voting can begin in September. So there is going to be a, you know, uh, the time where you can sign your affidavits for, um. For signing up for the election for the general election, but there's also a deadline. Um, after that, that gives you, I think, one week to back out. If you did not want to, yeah. I think August fifteenth is the backup date.
Pleasure. There's always a way.
Yeah. Forty-seven pages of dates for this year.
Good enough. I'm I'm good with that. Anybody got any questions?
Don't forget March fifth, presidential primary. Cauces are tomorrow night.
We have caucuses?
Republican caucuses are at the school tomorrow night at seven PM, I believe.
Water tower.
Mike.
Uh, numbers for you. Inside, outside. You know, you know, obviously they'd have to. Power wash the outside again before they paint, just to make sure. You know, really get down, grind out the rough spots, all that. Same with the inside, you know, we'd have to drain the water out, dry it, let them work, do the whole thing. Lots of different stuff involved with it, but you know, the brass tax of it is a hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred dollars. For inside and outside.
Can you get those to Woodson? We get those to Tim and?
I gave him to Caleb.
One fifty-three nine hundred.
Yep. And that, like we talked about. Should be done sooner than later. You know, it's at that twenty-year lifespan that we talked. The PER and everything, you know, hoping. We really kind of need to know where that's gonna sit and how it's gonna go with a lot of different things. Just to kind of touch on water stuff as long as we're talking. We're having lots of issues in the water plant right now. We've been fighting that for a while, um. Trying many different things, had electricians in there doing stuff. I've been on the phone with the company out of California that originally designed the plant, you know, over twenty years ago. We're trying to root things out and stuff. We're. We're having to kind of manually run the plant most of the time right now. To have to manually start it, manually shut it off. So that we don't, you know, dip in pressure low or high, run the tower over or anything like that. So that's just something for you guys to be aware of that we're fighting through and trying to figure out. There's not, not a whole lot, you know, unless you're a. An electrical engineer and a programmer and everything else. There's only so much that I can do about it. So it's a lot of. Phone talk and they're, they're trying to figure out if they can. Possibly dial into the system, but since it's an old analog system and not a digital system, there's a disconnect there. So a- again, you know, I I tried unplugging and plugging it back in. Taking it, swearing at it, uh, you know, I've tried everything. So we, the the good thing is that we are still able to. Manually do it when it does fail, honestly, it's been doing. We're able to manually do it and we're our parameters. I've changed that. So I'm running it differently now.
So is this like a breaker that like, or I know I'm oversimplifying it, but it it's like a fail-safe or a something that's malfunctioning?
Uh, that's, that's exactly what we're trying to figure out right now is if it's something within. The control panel itself, you've got hundreds of different relays and switches and everything that. Tell this valve to open and this one to close and power on, power off. And you know, they have lead and lag times and. There's a lot of different stuff going into it. Um, you know, we talked. Oh, that started the end of summer, I think, when we had the power issue out there.
Yeah, with the circuit.
We just got that taken care of recently. We finally got the special order breaker, got that taken care of and we thought, all right, finally. Literally four days later, the next problem started. That's because that plant is running out of life. Water plants have a thirty-year lifespan generally. We're darn close to it right now. I know they did some remodeling electrically and a few other things. I believe it was around oh-two, oh-three, about the same time the new tower went out. Um, but if you ask any of the electricians, it's also part of why it took us months to get that special order breaker. Everything's out of date. Things have been, you know, pieced together over the years to make it keep working and this, that and the next thing. So we're kind of bouncing in that area right now of. Keep it working, keep it going, trying to.
And that's in our report.
That is in the PR is the entire update and that's why, again, right now. Where I'm not coming to you guys with, hey. We gotta pony up for this water plant right now. Because we're trying to keep it operational, keep it going until we can get into. Actually putting that PER into motion. So I, it's just something that I want you guys all to be aware of. Kind of what's going on.
Is that why we have sometimes we have low water pressure?
Well, your low water pressure is is a a few. Different things, I guess, you know, in the winter time, what we do. Your water tower, you know, the the max pressure that. I can run in the water plant is fifty-six PSI. And that's with the water tower being plum full, about to spill over and run outside. The issue with keeping your tower that full in the winter time is that you end up like. Some cities northwest of us here. That when you keep it that full and you don't have high usage, it freezes. The last thing you want is a frozen water tower. It's not fun. So what we do is we lower our parameters in the winter time. So instead of keeping our water, you know, you think about that tower like it's a, a basketball. So instead of keeping it full to the top of the basketball, we keep it only to half full. What that does then is it cycles the water. Instead of running, you know, one big run every day or two days, I should say. Now we're gonna cycle it twice a day. And what that does is that keeps that water lower. It turns that water over. It's moving. It doesn't have the time to become stagnant and freeze. When we do that, you're gonna see that in the winter, we're running lower water pressure. We're running at the plant down there, which is also. Pretty much the lowest spot in town. So you're gonna have the highest PSI because you're in the lowest spot. We'll be running at, you know, forty-eight PSI on the low side and fifty-two on the high side. Which doesn't sound like a lot, but it's quite a difference. I mean, you'll notice it. But that's what we do to keep everything running.
I was just kind of wondering, because some likes. Last month or so, it's like been kind of really weird.
That's us playing around. I shouldn't say playing around. That's, that's us moving. Parameters and trying to figure things out. See. The one nice thing about what this has been doing right now is that this has been a phenomenal winter. I can bring that tower up right now and I'm not worried about it freezing. If this was a normal winter where it's twenty, thirty below, day after day after day, I couldn't do what I'm doing right now. Then I'd be really sleeping on tax at night more than I am right now worried about this. So. You'll see days where I let it come down to, you know, maybe forty-four PSI. And then I bring it all the way back up to fifty-six so that my tower doesn't have to run for two days. So you'll see a swing. You know, we're staying above. Any kind of threshold for fire protection and things like that. You know, we don't ever wanna go under that. But we have a a gamut that we can kind of run as far as that goes to make sure that we're running our system properly.
That changed my, I thought it was my filter. So I changed that filter. And my inline filter.
Might know the same thing, but I'm not on the city.
Well, yeah, so, uh, I changed it and then it was like I had really good water pressure, you know, for a few days. All of a sudden, it just went right down to like.
What's going on?
I probably had it up to fifty-six for a couple of days and then I dropped it back to forty-eight or something.
So I went down and changed the filter again. Thinking, well, maybe it was a whole bunch of crap. And I know you guys have had water problems. I went down, changed it again. I had a good water pressure then. I'm like, okay, you know.
Save the other filters.
Yeah, I heard you were messing around, Don, so I shut her down.
Just have a lot of money to buy filters.
But yeah, that's, that's just something I figured that you should all be aware of and know we. We're fighting it. It's not fun, but we're doing it. We're trying to get it figured out.
It's unfortunate that the plant has moved so far away because if I was closer, I'd go over and turn it off and not for you, which is. The building was by the water tower.
Sure.
I was personally trained by Bob Glue. These are the switches. When it runs over, you come over here. We can't run it or every time it runs out. You're a kid. You just come over here.
Shut it off, yeah.
Good, good use.
Tell my friends sorry. I have to go turn off the water.
There you go. So that's, that's that on the, the painting. Like I said, I just wanted to throw that.
So.
Water plant in there.
Bought them, bought the. Money for that. So are we, do we have funding for that or what are we doing there?
A hundred and fifty-three nine?
Yeah.
I I think right now what we're really doing is we're pausing, we're holding to see. Where we land with this PER.
Okay.
How many years is it gonna be before we can actually go forward, put it into place? You know, if it's something that it comes back and it's gonna be ten years until we can do anything, then we need to start thinking about a way to fund that. Right now, this was just, you know, let you guys know what the numbers are. What it's gonna be. This is a a good, I mean, you know, it's here. We all know how inflation goes and everything. It's gonna go up a bit every year from here.
Probably move forward on this.
We we should. I mean, we shouldn't let it, we shouldn't let it go in ten years.
But no.
You know.
Right.
Well, that's just for the painting you're talking about or do we have funding for the painting?
No, we don't.
We don't. No, no, this is. This is something that needs to be done relatively soon, you know. Um, I think you guys all had, they did get a copy of the report and stuff.
Well, you can see.
The inspection report. Yeah, and you can see the spots. Now that it's been cleaned, you can really see each individual little rough spot. And if you can see them from the ground, they're a lot bigger up there, you know. So. There's something to do before that investment. Goes awry on us. So I got where you want the tower paint.
Okay.
Thank you. So new business, yeah, um. There will be a public hearing here that the county is holding, one or two, you March eleventh, council meeting. I believe I sent you guys the notice. Um, little bit of backstory, you might remember. Um, in April twenty-two, the Board of Commissioners had to, had to redistrict, um. And when that was done, the maps that were accepted, um, kind of forced Commissioner Lukachek out of. His district. Um, and he filed a lawsuit against the board. Um, a Cas County judge ruled in favor. And it was, um, had to appoint a redistricting committee. So Mark Dickinson, Laura Bochold, Rod Skoy. Phil Hodappin's in favor are part of that redistricting commit, commission. Um, they are, um, required to hold, um, public hearings. And, uh, the county has asked for one of them to be held here. Um, because they have three that are mandatory and then they have to have work sessions after to hear public input regarding the. The redistricting and how it could have, could or could not have affected the area. Um, by looking at the maps, most of you know, it affected Black Duck. It affected. Some of our surrounding townships, but it definitely affected who our district representative was for the county. Um, the commission believes that this may be a. Well-populated, well-attended, um, public hearings. So. Um, they thought our meeting was next Monday, um. I told them because of the way the calendar is lined, it's actually on the eleventh. So they're. They've asked to hold this at four-thirty here, uh, City Hall, uh. Those five, uh, commissioners will be here in attendance in addition to. The, the redistricting commission. As well as Jody Treat and Diane Mall from the Administrator's Office. Um, and then we will have, uh, follow up with our regular meeting. So everyone is welcome to attend. This table will be used up by that commission.
Correct.
Um, the larger and they'll have the regular thing.
Do we have any sense that their public hearing will take the entire time between four-thirty and six?
I really don't know. Um, my conversation with Jody Treat was just like I said, because. A lot of the townships and cities that were affected by the redistricting. Um, kind of effect. Like our area and down to Turtle River, they expect. Um, kind of affect like our area and down to Turtle River, they expect that to. Um, have some attendance. Sounds like it's gonna be advertised to the pioneer, probably the American, the byline. It's already on their website. Um, and then the notices have gone out, um. They're in town.
Yeah, because it it becomes. Well, which one was Craig?
Um, the Craig was district um, two originally. And now he is, um, um. Always district three. And basically we've done it in redistrict by population, but what happened was. The way the borderlines went, it forced Lukachek and Gosvik against one another. Because they would have been in the same district, instead of them being able to stay, continue holding their same seat. Um, there's scuttlebutt that Lukachek was upset because it was done deliberately to get him off the board.
Oh, who's our, who's our uh?
Craig Gosbig. Is your district group? We used to have Tim Favor.
Yeah.
Or not Tim Favor, I'm sorry, Tim Sumner was our, was our county commissioner.
Yeah.
And then when the redistrict, we got Gosbig. Yeah, yeah, Tim Favor was on the, is part of the redistricting commission, I always say Tim Favor when in. Thinking Tim Sumner, Tim Sumner is on the county, is the county commissioner. He was, I represent, he was our county commissioner before it redistricted and now Craig Gosbig represents our area. But yes, you're correct, Tim Favor used to be.
So the one map here is the. The where it was redistricted to.
The one that says two thousand ten to two thousand twenty was pre.
Yep.
And the one that says twenty two is what it is now.
Right switch.
Yeah. And I don't know how far back it goes, but, um. Every governing entity was supposed, we, we.
How close are they supposed to have it in, um, if you know off the button?
The population is are supposed to be even, as close to even as possible.
Even as possible.
But I think if you might remember, uh, Max, every entity was supposed to stay if they were going to redistrict or not. Um, Vemiji, we filed a resolution saying that we would remain because we only have the one precinct. So we didn't need to change any borders, but if you go into Vemiji proper. They changed their precincts too and and that's why their. City Council Board shifted as well from some different boards shifted. Because their populations changed, all, which in turn, I think. Um, kind of changed Beltran County.
Got you. Such a good meeting, anyway.
I guess we'll find out, it might be well attended and it might not be attended at all. Never know.
You never know.
So, yes, March, March eleventh at four thirty. And then the other new business is Mike again. Transfer.
Oh, I had a conversation with Brian from the county. And they are looking at possibly removing our three recycling bins that we have currently. Okay. Over by our old shop and putting in, um, one compactor. So it would be essentially, you throw your stuff in, hit the button, it would compact it and away you go. Um, I think a lot of the reasoning for this is uh, cost savings, manpower savings. Um, the three bins that are over there. Hoping I remember this number correctly, I believe that they said they get roughly a little over a half a ton per bin of actual recycling. Whereas with these compacters, they're getting six tons. Because they're able to obviously smash it down, compact it. Makes a lot less trips to have to bring a truck around. Um.
Well. They've obviously thought it through. Or they're.
They're, they're thinking it through enough to, to, you know, reach out and see if it's something that we're interested in. Um.
I would just be so concerned that people are gonna get the two confused.
No, there wouldn't be the, the other ones wouldn't exist, only the compactor would be there.
As far as throwing their garbage.
They're going to get it confused, because when you go out to the uh. Transfer station to dump your stuff.
They have.
I follow you.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, we already have a problem with people putting garbage there.
And I mean, but if they've got a, they they think they. I I just see it thrown up. Okay, you can get six tons.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. I don't recycle.
Right, and and that's, that's very possible. That fortunately for us isn't our problem. So to speak, you know what I mean?
Isn't it, isn't that luxury that we have it there? You just go away forever.
Right.
Has been a conversation.
Yep, it it has been a conversation that I've heard about over the years because of. You know, and and this is, it's one of these things that. You know, you're leaving it up to the community, people passing through, people from other counties. Are throwing stuff over there, you know. I, when we had our shop right by there, you know, we were able to police it a bit on the real windy days and stuff. You get problems where it fills up over there and, you know, people instead of just saying, hey, you know what, I'll come back later today or maybe tomorrow. They just pitch stuff out on the ground and they don't care. And then you see, boy, I've seen beds, couches, recliners.
Kids toys.
You know, kids' toys.
TVs.
TVs, stoves, you name it, I've seen them laying over there. Cause it's not their problem, as long as they get it out of their vehicle without getting caught, they don't care, that's just the mentality of some people. You know, but it's the few bad apples can ruin it for everybody, you know. Um, but however, all that aside, the county would be looking for, um. Essentially some type of of.
More yield.
Lease agreement type of deal with us that we're not going to be selling that piece of property anytime soon. Because if they do bring this in, they're gonna wanna put a a ten by thirty concrete pad there for it to sit on. They're gonna bring, you know, power over to it to run the machine, they'd like to put a a street light, yard light over the machine. You know, over the dumpster so that there's lighting there. Um, if you're familiar with that spot down there. Those three bins currently are between two driveways, so to speak, and they run east and west. What we would be looking at doing is actually moving them or moving it to the west across the driveway, so to speak. And turning it so it would run north and south. So that you would essentially just pull right in from First Street. Stop alongside of it, throw your stuff out, hit the button, driveway. It'd be east access for everyone. Streamline and then get everyone, especially the uh, the hook truck away from. What is kind of a soft part of that lot over there and get them up onto some more high ground. And then obviously the county would be doing some gravel work around it to ensure that they can get their truck in and out. So. I kinda told them that I would guess that this council would love this option. So it's kinda up to you guys what you wanna do.
What kind of lease do we have with them now?
We have nothing.
We basically just have a, yeah.
An understanding that they put it there. There's nothing really written, Laurie, much like the. Charger at Wayside Rust, when Bill Charming Electric put that in, we have a understanding with them in writing the.
So they're looking for a ten year, a fifteen?
Didn't really say, we we just kinda wanted to go through this process first, find out where everybody sat. There's no point going any further if everyone says, you know what, no, we don't want that, we don't want that headache, we don't want that house.
Why are they gonna keep kids out of it?
Well, that was a question that I asked. Um, there is a safety mechanism essentially built into it that it won't. Compact if it's open, that doesn't necessarily mean that. A kid can't get in there and it it closes and somebody does it.
This is the same. Uh. Platform basically that's over in Panima, right?
Yes, yes.
Panima?
Yeah.
Yeah, where that one's fully gated. With a camera and lighted.
It's open twenty four hours.
Open twenty four hours, but you gotta, the gate has to go in and out, yeah, yeah.
There's one down. Down south here too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's one down there. There, there's, there's no guarantee, there's no one hundred percent guarantee, but I guess that's kinda where. Rental accountability comes in.
And it's their liability.
I know, I just.
And that, that would be something too, like you said, it's their liability. You know, I I guess if there's some sort of contract written, it can be written into there that the the city assumes no liability.
Can't hold this room.
Yeah. For, for the machine itself.
And they would be responsible for all expenses regarding.
Yep. Yeah, we would, we would incur no expense for this.
No infrastructure for them.
Nope.
No. I don't have a problem with it, electric mill, everything.
Everything is theirs. Yep, the only thing they really kinda ask of us is, is more of a. Kind of a gentleman's agreement of, you know, hey, keep an eye on it, you guys are around here, Public Works, police, you guys are around, just. Keep an eye, if you see something broke or off or whatever, let us know.
It would still be, there would be no sorting involved by the.
No.
Public, you just dump all your recyclables together and they figure it out somewhere else, right, they uncompact it somewhere, sort of.
Yep, that's my understanding.
So they would have to uncompact it.
Yeah, that's wherever they do all that stuff.
A lot of stuff in there that shouldn't be.
Well, yeah.
I opened it up one time and I saw a big roll of barbed wire.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Somebody took down a fence.
Well, and and like Mike said, one of the, one of the drawbacks to where we're located in the county is we're right adjacent to Kuchin. We're right adjacent to Atasca. And I don't know where their transfer stations are, but we're a heck of a lot closer.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Because they use our same zip code, so sure, they come here instead. And the people that are here that are for summer, they're gonna come up the scenic and they're gonna come here instead of going down so closer to Vemiji. Or they're gonna go to Power Day.
All right, so we can have something on the eleventh or?
Oh, I don't know if it's that soon.
We need it that quick?
I, I, I told him that I would talk to the council, gauge where everyone was with it.
The temperature.
And I would.
Yeah.
I would contact him tomorrow and see kinda what the steps are from here.
Go for it.
I can do that.
You know, I, I think it might help me things up if we got something nice to meet. Some people wanna keep it neat.
And to me, I I did ask about, um. Possible screening around it, whether it be, you know, a wooden fence or a chain link fence with, you know, the privacy slats in it. Something like that, and he said that definitely would be a possibility. If the city wanted.
Absolutely needed at this point. I mean, you have two new businesses on railroad, Cheryl hasn't even opened. Her building, what she's doing with the old lumberyard and get the library there and we don't need it to look.
Well, we've cleaned that lot up a lot since we've moved our piles of material and everything out of there, so. Anything we can do to kinda keep it nice over there.
Yeah.
If they're offering screen, we should definitely take them up.
Take them up on it.
Three lights?
Nope, nothing.
Is that, it's getting, it's still really dark.
I know. I'll reach out, I'll let you know. I'll take a. I'll take a new count. See where we are in Oregon, you know.
Yeah, like all Thursday.
Yeah, I, no, well, and you know, we've got some ourselves with that. Nasty stretch of, um, the frontage road down there and I see we've got one. Right here on Summit that likes to work one day and then another day it doesn't like to work, so. We've got our share of them going to right now.
Okay.
LEDs are great that we've transferred to, but I tell you what, the life on some of them is nowhere near as long as. We hoped.
Really?
Yeah, we, we seem to kinda get. I don't know, a couple, well, let's see, before me, I think. Uh, not even half we're done, cause we've done quite a few since I've came.
I think we did it in like four years.
And I know that. I've had to replace ones that have already replaced once. I wish, I wish, they are not cheap. There, you know, what are we at, four hundred bucks a head, I think?
Really?
No. No.
So you already placed the whole head?
Yeah, you always the whole head.
Wow.
Well, at least we'll have like copper electrical cabling in our.
Well, we found, we found some real fun stuff in doing this.
Some of the cities are having people rip off their.
Yeah.
Copper wire. And they can't even get the lights on because of that.
And they replace it and they do it again.
They do it again.
Yeah, we don't have that problem at least.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you stuff that people think, tell me.
I know, I I hear it too and, like I said, a lot of those aren't, they're, they're not ours. They, they belong to Bill Charming Electric and, you know, they do them as they can and when they can. Just kinda is what it is.
And those ones, we just pay a set, a set monthly fee for.
I know, the one thing I do know is that they are in kinda the same. Boat of things that we are, when they are going out, they're putting the new L E D ones in. Instead of the old style, which is nice, they are, they are brighter and they do seem to have a wider pattern. So that is nice.
Yep.
But it just takes a little bit.
First Street and Summit, that's fine, no complaints.
Perfect, good.
I always like to hear the good, Ron.
We always also get the benefit of the Sanford's.
Yeah, you know, one light coming from there, you know.
You know, I knew it at midnight.
Yeah.
Well, I'll tell you what, when we redo the tower, I'll put one up there and I'll shine it right down on your. Think the aliens are coming.
Darkening shades aren't what they used to be.
Well, that's all I got on that transfer station stuff, guys, I'll, I'll talk to Brian tomorrow and. Kinda move it along and then, uh.
Documentation that needs to get drafted, partner with me so I can.
Yes, definitely, yeah.
Well, nobody else anything else? No second book? Favor.
Hi.
Oh, we stand adjourned.
You're gonna tell them the off the record stuff as soon as I stop then.
Please do.
Kidding.